I have seven.
Seven o'clock, alright. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and Jim, I need to apologize to you because I don't think I sent you a copy of this letter from LLA. It just lists all the people that they want us to appoint for the Lake Lilinona Authority. I don't think I did that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll, I'll go over it. Alright, so.
Yeah.
Alright. We already said I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Hi Lumari, how are you?
I'm doing alright, good to see you all.
Yep, good. Alright, so I don't see Russ D'Enzo here, but we're starting anyway. So we have the approval of the minutes, a regular meeting of June 7th. I will need a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve. I will, motion to approve.
Okay, I will second that. Do you have any corrections or anything that you wanted to make, Jim?
They all look good, no?
Um, same here, I don't have anything. So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the tax collectors report. There are three items on the tax, I'm sorry, four items on the tax collectors report that totaled $246.65. And it's Jeffrey Sharp for $46.77, and Julie, I will get you this. And then Jeffrey Sharp for $33.82, A-C-A-R leasing for $157.77, and Michael Savariz for $8.29 for a total of $246.65. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Yes, so, motion to approve the tax collectors report.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next thing on our agenda, communications from the public. And we have a long agenda, and I know Mr. McDonald asked to speak, and I said I would give him two minutes, so. Dennis, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. Hello, Jim.
Hi Dennis.
Hi. What I, all I wanted to do was ask that my communication that I had sent to Peter on July 1st be included in the tonight's minutes for the public record, you know, and I just wanted to make the selectmen aware of the fact that what's going on with the Inland Wetlands Commission is, you have a chairman who's operating unilaterally without taking things to his commission. He decides what's gonna go to the commission, what's not gonna go to the commission, and I've discussed this with John Cody, and John tells me, "Look Dennis, he says, I'm the enforcement officer, I don't do anything else, Russ does it all." So, you have a problem there in the fact that if you read all the case law, you're gonna find out, and you already know that, you know, the commission is supposed to act as the determining factor, not one particular person. So, and the fact that, you know, the comment has been made about what was, what happened in March. In March, there was never anything on the public agenda, it was never added to the agenda, and it never happened, okay, because it wasn't in the public record. That's a fact. So, you know, all I really wanted, this particular point is I wanna just check all the boxes, make sure that you guys are aware that what Mr. D'Enzo is doing, since he is a selectman, okay, and I just wanna add through the years, the past ten years or so, about this, this vision of Snobberry. Having been involved in Roxbury and owned and lived there for forty-five years, I can tell you those are not the people that I know that live at Roxbury. They're just not like that. But this is the kind of, these are the kind of stunts that gives a town a bad name, and so, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay. And there are two sides to every story, and you have come in to see me. You have complained about, you know, some motions that were made, etc. But to go back to your first comment about if you wrote to the town clerk and asked to be on the agenda because you didn't hear from me, town clerk doesn't put anything on our agenda. The Board of Selectmen will put on their agenda what they wanna put on. And so, that, I don't know why you would write to the town clerk and ask to be put on our agenda. So.
Well, cuz I, cuz I had asked the month before, Barbara, you know, not only.
And, 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 I said no, but we had a conversation. We had a conversation a month ago, so. And I told you I was not putting you on the agenda for you because that's what you wanted to do, you wanted to come in and, you know, talk about the chairman and how he's unilaterally making motions, etc. And that is not true. I have found that that is not true. So, for me, you know, you had an opportunity to appeal the denial, and, and you haven't done that. They're asking you to bring in another application with the same plan that you've gone to zoning and, and the health department. You're refusing to do that. There's really not a whole lot. You, you had an opportunity to appeal within a fifteen day period, you did not. However, I am gonna stick with my original thing that I said in the beginning of this. We are not, we are not the proper channel to come in and try to appeal a wetlands decision to the selectmen. It doesn't work that way. So, I wrote to you, I wrote to you, wait, I wrote to you, and I said, "I am offering you to have your attorney contact our attorney, take this offline and deal with it." And that's where we stand, and that is our offer. And so, if you don't want to do that, I really can't help that. The chairman is well within his rights to do what, what he has done, and that's, that's all I have to say about it. I don't know, Jim, you wanna comment on it, and we're gonna move on?
No, we gotta move on. I wanna see it get resolved. It's been way too long, and I believe we are at a point where the town council has to come in and attorneys have to address this and get it straightened out, cuz we're at a roadblock.
Right. So, that's where we are. So, again, if your attorney, you wanna get me the information, our attorney will be happy to call. We, we did have her write up exactly a response to all of this. You didn't like it, so I really, I really don't know what else we can offer you. And, but that's a final offer. It's a final offer. Okay?
And all I wanna say is your, the, what your attorney wrote up, she reinforced, you know, the point that I made, and the fact that there is no site plan approval, okay, for my particular application, if you read it.
I am not, I'm not gonna be discussing it because I am not looking at all of this. I don't attend every wetlands meeting, I'm not on their Zoom. And what I have found in trying to help you is that all of your information is a moving target. It's this, it's that, this changed. So, I am done. The Board of Selectmen is not gonna talk about it anymore. Tonight, we're gonna move on, and there is the offer. If you are still not satisfied and you do not want to bring in what they're asking for in, in a, an application, another application with all of the information that they're asking, then have your attorney contact ours. Okay?
Barbara.
Thank you. No, I'm done. Okay. Let's, I'm gonna move on because we have a lot to do.
Barbara, you may wanna forward Dennis's, to Dennis, Gail's, we just new email she sent today. As chairman of the commission for up to thirty years now, I've done nothing but hard volunteer work, and I've done everything by the book, and that, that is supported by the town. So, I don't know what Dennis is talking about. I know his game, this is his game. You, you should Google his name and see what he's doing in Florida.
Okay.
Same stuff, same stuff. It is pertinent. It is pertinent, cuz he does the same things where he lives in Florida. Harasses elected officials and volunteers, and that's what he's doing here. Gail's memo spells it out clearly, and the email she just sent clearly shows the commission has the authority to do what it did. He needs to submit another application. If he doesn't wanna do that, then fine, but I agree with you. It's time, it's time to go to court with Dennis on this. It's time to put an end to this harassment and let a judge decide whether the commission did right or not, cuz I know we will win. And that's what he needs to do, or submit another application, like he's been asked eight times now, and that's enough for me.
Okay. Alright. So, there you have it. Alright, we're moving on to commission and board appointments. The Council on Aging, and there's two for the Council on Aging and one for the ZBA alternate. I would make a motion that we table those because we don't have people. We did have people interested in ZBA. It did not work out for various reasons. So, I'm making a motion to table those three appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the officers for, and assistants for LLA. Before you got on, Russ, I, I told Jim, "I was sorry, I didn't send this," but there are these certified officers there, and what I would do is I, I'll make a motion to appoint all of the certified officers and assistants that are listed on the May 3rd, 2021 letter from Shannon Young, the Lake Lilinona Chairman. He is asking us to appoint them, and they enforce boating and, boating and safety, littering and trespass regulations in the towns surrounding Lake Lilinona.
So moved.
Okay, so you'll make a motion, so moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Okay, so now, we are members of the Husatonic Resources Recovery Authority that began July 1. What I didn't do on the June meeting was appoint a member and an alternate, and it's for a three-year term. It would begin July 1. I already did attend their Board of Directors meetings. They don't have them every month. I think the next one is in September. I'd be happy to, to go on that while we get going with this group, if that's what you would like, for, for the regular member.
I would like.
Okay, could you make a motion?
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah. To appoint me as the regular member of the HRA Board of Directors.
I'll make a motion to appoint the regular member of the HRR Board of Directors.
Barbara.
You say my name.
Barbara Henry.
Barbara Henry.
Right.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, already you haven't finished your term and you're signing up for volunteer work. Do I have that right?
Well, whatever.
Good for you.
I get it going here. We, well, because you know what, we are going to, they're gonna put another bin in there because they want us to separate glass because they do have a buyer for that, but I also wanna start collecting the, the five cent returnables because the, the firm that we had before will start picking those up again. I wanna do that because it helps to fund our resident relief. So, we're gonna do that, and I wanna make sure that that gets off the ground.
Barbara?
Yep.
Where's the glass going? Is that, do all you recall, Harwington, the glass?
I can't answer that. Harwington, it's going to a company that is, you know, grinding up, I believe that they're using it in road surfacing also.
Yep.
And who's transporting it?
Okay, that is taken care of by Oak Ridge. They are supplying the bin. The bin will have a, you know, a round circle that only bottles can go in. It will say glass only. The members from HRA are gonna be there in the beginning, so train people to do that, and then they are paying to haul it. So, we don't have any cost.
Okay.
We don't have any cost to haul it, and it is their own bin, so we don't have to buy another bin.
Do we anticipate any issues with the separation of glass and cans from the public?
No, I'll tell you that a lot of the public is, has been waiting, when are we gonna start taking our, you know, five cent? Now, there's glass in there, you know, there's beer can, there's beer bottles that'll go in there, but the rest of it, wine bottles and all of that, we never got five cents on, and all of those can go in. There's milk bottles, there's, there's a lot of other bottles that are not five cent returnables that can go in there. Some of the beer bottles are gonna end up in the glass, and that's fine, it's taken away, but if we tell people they, it's more of a separation, I know that, but most people want to comply with that. You're gonna have some that aren't going to, and there's not a whole lot you can do about it.
Right, but most people will in this town.
Yes, they will. Alright, so, then we need an alternate, also for a three-year term. I know that Sandra Quantrill has expressed an interest in being on HRA. I mean, her, her background is trash, and you know.
I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Sandra Quantrill to the HRA alternate three-year term.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. I'll second.
Okay, so, alright, me too. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, thank you. Alright, the local bridge program, the grant awards for, we already reported on this, for Davenport and Minor Bridge. We got over a $700,000 grant for Minor Bridge. In the meantime, Davenport, the costs have escalated. They're thinking, what we ended up putting, what I put in for the numbers that I was given of the cost for this, they have gone up when we opened up all the bids, and even with the low bid, the low bid is over by another hundred and, I think, $150,000. So, the state said, "Okay, we'll give you that extra money. You've gotta put in a supplemental application, and we are going to give you," I'm sorry, it's more than $150,000. Fifty percent of the total project grant, because they added in the engineering fees, etc., which we knew that they would pay for, is gonna come out to $523,400. So, they're estimating that this is going to cost the town $1,046,800. I put in six hundred and something, so it's gone up 400,000 more, 422,000, which is a lot, but that was the low bid, so. And, and the contractor, which I would like to award tonight, that, in the, at the next step, is willing, was willing to wait so that we don't have to go back. I mean, we know the cost of materials and everything are escalating. We need to, we need to approve this.
So, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for a motion to approve the project, the supplemental application for the Davenport Road, Davenport Bridge, Davenport Road Bridge repair. And the supplemental application is, for the total project, is $1,046,800.
I'll make a motion to, to approve submitting a supplemental application for the Davenport Road Bridge.
Okay, and the town will receive $523,400 towards that.
Right, but that doesn't need to be part of the motion.
No.
Right. So, I made a motion.
Yep.
And I just wanna, I just wanna say a few words on it. It just seems excessive, and it seems with all we've spent with Cardinal Engineering, this is not a big project. It's a repair. It's not a total replacement.
Well, they're gonna replace the culvert. They are replacing the whole culvert.
They're supposed to use the granite sides. We heard years ago, they were gonna reuse some of the granite, and it just, I know there's nothing we can do, but it just seems like the number has doubled in a year, and it seems like it's kinda all over. We're dealing with professionals, but I don't feel like I'm getting a professional result, but.
Also, the contingency went from 42,000 to 80,000, and that's gotta get, I'm sure it's gonna be taken out of that. Has to be, because I don't know what else the contingencies can be. They've already taken this thing apart, and we have a, you know, something that's been there for over a year. It'll be two years that's worked. They know what they have there. So, I don't know what the contingency can be, but it, they, they require it in the application.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So, hopefully, it'll come down $80,000.
Alright, I made a motion.
Yep, yep, we got a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so now, we, I would like a motion to award the Davenport Road Bridge Repair to NJR Construction.
And have they committed to their bid? Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to award the Davenport Road Bridge Project to MJA?
No, N as in Nancy, J R.
NJR Construction.
Correct.
Where are they out of?
Oh, God. Actually, they built our salt shed here, and they also worked on Willers Bridge. They were, they were in the Waterbury area.
Okay, alright.
They were Mancini Construction. It was Nick Mancini. This is the son who worked with his father, and so, this is Nick Junior is NJR. So, he was on our project here, and we worked with him before, actually, so.
Cuz, I know we've already moved this whole thing, but like this, the spec sheet on what they're actually doing for us for a million bucks, there's gotta be a spec sheet, right?
Well, their bid, their bid was 700, yes, it was 700 and, I, I, I'll get the exact number for the minutes, 730,000. And all of this other extra stuff brought it up over a million.
And the extra stuff was?
With the contingency, and it was, let's see, the engineering fees did not go up, but the construction costs, they're saying, went up from our original application. The construction costs and the contingencies went up.
Oh, the $700,000 bid went up?
No, the $700,000 bid is staying the same.
So, the construction fees.
We, no, we originally asked for 660,000.
Right, yeah.
And the low bid came in at 700. We didn't do anything because we didn't know if we were even getting this. So, when they finally said, "Yes, we're gonna award it," it said, "Well, this was our low bid," and they said, "Okay, add it to your application, and we'll, we'll pay the difference." That's what the state said.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, so, did I get it all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright, the state police contract. Okay, oh wait a minute, this is, I'm sorry, I grabbed the wrong file. The state police contract, the trooper contract. We normally approve the trooper's contract in, at our annual meeting in May. I did not do it because we have another year till next June. However, there were some things that came through in the legislature, and they said, "We are going to cancel this contract effective June 30th." So, I said, "Great." So, as of right now, I said, "You can't cancel our contract, but we will, I have to take this not only to the selectmen, but I gotta take it to a town meeting." And they said, "Fine, we'll keep the, we'll keep the terms of the old contract until you do that." So, I, I can't even tell you what has changed in here. I did read it before I went away on vacation. Oh, but the thing that, this is what the reason was. They only had it for the town of Roxbury, and the other one was Town of Roxbury and Bridgewater. And I said, "You have to change that because that's how we're moving forward." I understand we are still the only towns that have, share a resident trooper, and, and I don't wanna lose that, because then the cost would be exorbitant. So, I would like a motion to approve the new police contract, which I did read before I went away, and there's nothing glaring in there, except that they did forget to combine us with Bridgewater. And when we get the new contract, I have to take it to a town meeting, so I, I'm gonna need a town meeting date also.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so we have approval of the state police contract. I don't know.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now you have approved.
Now I have it approved. Thank you. Too much, I'm thinking of a date here. This, I mean, I don't have anything else to put on a town meeting, so this is crazy, but I have to do it in July.
We'll do it. Nobody will show up but us. Nobody's gonna show up for a contract that if we deny it, what do we do?
Well, you know what I could do? The Board of Finance, well, they might not have a meeting on July 20th, but if they do, I could put it right before that meeting.
There you go.
Alright. Alright, I will put July meeting.
I won't be there. I'll be at Don Gagne's retirement party.
Don Gagne.
You know Don, you met him.
Oh.
Is that the big boss?
No, no, that's my friend from deep. You met him at my party, Barb.
Oh.
Don, yeah, yeah, it's retirement parties that night.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good. Alright, so, the next thing is this ARP dollars. We have to have a plan to use this money. We don't have to, this is the money from the feds to the state, all COVID-related, and, I mean, I'm sorry, the, this, the American Relief Plan dollars, and, but we have to come up with a plan. And there are several things that you can use it for. The COG was going to look into, I mean, some of the other towns, not our COG, wanted to hire somebody to figure out all the, all the funds, how it's gonna be spent. You gotta keep records of it. I spoke with Kim, and it's gonna be a lot, but the thing is, is that we aren't getting a lot of money. We're getting like $300,000 over two, for two years. So, it is over $600,000. There are some things that we can use it for. I know we don't have to figure it all out tonight, but we do have to give it some thought. There are certain things you can spend it on, certain things that you can't spend it on.
Such as?
Such as, we could help give some money to the fire department and ambulance. They wanted to, you know, add on. They were, when they start a capital campaign, we would be able to do that. We would also be able to buy some equipment for them. I know that they need some defibrillators. They have new members in the ambulance. We could help.
Alright, okay, so emergency services stuff, anything like bridges?
Yeah.
Um, well, there's broadband infrastructure. We just went through our, with Trinity Health, that's another, that is our paramedic service. They are saying that they accepted a contract with us. They extended it, and they're losing money if they do it, because they bought out Campion. And I was like, "That's not our problem," but I mean, we could, they were looking for like, they, $10,000 from all the town.
Is, is this something our Board of Finance could oversee?
Yeah, that's the way to roll.
I mean, towns are hiring people to do this?
But we're not, but I wasn't gonna suggest that we.
We're not gonna hire, but I think our Board of Finance is, that's their charge.
Right.
Well, it's, it's like a project coordinator for all the towns, and these are other COGS that are doing that. And I spoke with some of the people on ours, and it was like, you know, "We don't even have enough. Why should we, you know, hire somebody out of this money?" So, if we're gonna hire somebody, we could give some money to our finance director who's gonna keep track of it. It is, it's a whole separate thing, and she's gonna open up a whole separate account to make sure that she's tracking it correctly, etc. So, um, we have some things, we could do the firehouse, public works garage.
Well, let, let, let us think about it, Barbara. You throwing it out there, and I, you know, I can't.
No, 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 I said I don't wanna figure it out tonight.
And I like Jim's idea. I really think the Board of Finance should be brought in, and we all should be thinking about it.
Yeah. Well, what I need to do is get you what the things that can be used for. Like there, like I said, there's broadband infrastructure.
So, bridges or broadband infrastructure?
They are.
Huh?
They are.
You're saying broadband infrastructure, not broadband and infrastructure?
Correct.
Right. This is a big waste of tax dollars, I wanna say. It's disgusting. The, the money's going. Their, their money's going to towns that don't really need it for what they're giving us this for. Yet they're gonna raise taxes. Isn't that nice? Great what they're doing to our children. Really a shame.
Well, what I would like, uh, so, well, you know what I would, you know what I would like to do? If, if the selectmen would like to just have a meeting with the Board of Finance and Kim and just come up with, we could spend two hundred thousand dollars pretty quick, three hundred thousand even.
Sure.
Yeah, that's the way to go.
Collaborative. About it, yeah.
Okay, that's what we'll do. I will set something up. All right, the Housing Authority. Um, actually, some people wanted to come in today to speak to me about moving forward with the Housing Authority, but, um, they had to postpone it, so I'm not sure I even know what they wanted to talk about. However, I believe, and Jim, you would know more than me, that there are people that are very interested in moving forward with the Housing Authority.
Yes, yeah, and they're supposed to be, Charlie Stoffaker is gonna take the, uh, the lead on this for now. And he was gonna schedule another meeting and email everybody with a date and time. And we were gonna all get together again in the near future.
Okay.
But I believe, uh, firm Charlie and Sue are taking the lead at this stage in the game.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, they, they, uh, they were the ones that were gonna come in and speak to me today. They have to postpone it, so I'm gonna see them later on in the week, then that's great. Um, good, so maybe that'll get off the ground. All right, Painter Hill and Squire Culverts, Russ.
Okay, Frank and I went and looked at them. They definitely need to be replaced. Uh, I did tell you, Barbara, that both of them are clogged up, which is a problem. I don't know if you remembered and sent them out to unclog them. Especially after the three inch storm and there's another three inch storm coming Friday, from what I understand. But there's big, big trees blocking them. They haven't been cleaned out in quite some time, or, or a big storm just put a lot of stuff there. It needs to be cleaned out. And, and, in the good old days, you, you, you just would replace them because they're being replaced with the exact size pipe. Uh, the walls need work. You hire a mason to do the walls, you get a contractor, he gives you a price to pull the pipes and put new pipes in. Same size, no engineering really need it, but unfortunately, you gotta put a bid out.
Yes.
And you're not gonna hire an engineer, you're not gonna do a bid ourselves. I can't do it. I don't have the time to put a bid together. So we need to hire engineers and obviously engineers have certain guidelines they must follow.
Yeah.
Um, and they're gonna have to do drawings and design. Wetlands are gonna have to be marked even though it's a stream. And they have to follow a certain protocol, so there's no way out. In my opinion, we have to hire engineers to engineer this. Barbara doesn't have the time to do it and they, they need to put the bid out and we go from there. In the good old days, we called three contractors up and say, give us a price to replace these. So I had Frank Lasky come with me to look at it. But he ne- he never got back to me with what it may cost and I, I don't really wanna ask him to do all that hard work 'cause it's gonna go out the bid with engineering drawings. And that's my recommendation is that we hire Cardinal. I think they gave us a price, Barbara?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand, something like that?
Yeah.
For both or each?
Both.
For both, for, uh.
Ten, ten each, I thought.
Then my recommendation is that we make a motion to retain Cardinal to do the design and the bid.
Okay, what they were going to do is they were going to also submit, get the information and said that you can go in for the local bridge program next year, but I don't know that. Or can, can we wait for that? But I don't know that we can wait for that.
Not on Squire, you can't.
Right, I think, okay, so I, you know what, we're just gonna have to get these things done, yes.
Yeah, I think you could just.
Do you think we can wait?
Grant, it waits, it holds you up, there's more, it'll make it more expensive with all the stuff you gotta do for grants. Um, I think we move forward, hire Cardinal and get it done.
Okay, so.
Rainy Hills and is bad, it's not Rainy Hills, Painter Hill where it meets Rainy Hill.
Right.
But, you know, the, the bottoms are corroded out and that's not.
Well, they're, they're, he's already saying that they're structurally compromised and in danger of collapse.
Well.
Painter, he said Painter Hill, that one might be eligible for emergency funding, but, um, he said, you gotta move on these.
Right, so I, I'm, I'll make a motion to retain Cardinal to do the, uh, design and bids for the amount of money that they quoted.
Okay.
Agree, second.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I will tell him that. Okay, uh, Shepog River.
Okay, Shepog River again, um, Edwin Matthews asked me to take over kind of managing the content, the, uh, the court agreement with Waterbury. Um, that requires consultants. We, we did approve using a consultant and I believe we paid those bills and then another bill for two thousand something came around out of the blue, right, Barbara?
The last one's, it's ten.
But our share.
It's ten.
No, no, we, they're asking us to commit ten for future use.
Yes, we spent twenty-five hundred, I'm almost positive.
Right, and I don't know that we approved that.
Yeah, we did.
As a, we did, all right, you were gonna look into that, so good, that gets paid. The problem with the way it's being run is they're hiring consultants.
Right.
And then just sending the town a bill and Washington pays the bills without question, but I, I don't, I don't think we could, we should operate that way. I think it's good that he asked me to take charge 'cause I'll do a, a good job of controlling when we need consultants and when we could do it ourselves. So as you know, they retain the services of a valve consultant, a guy who's an expert at valves and meters. As we know, Waterbury's infrastructure is in dire need of help. Its meters aren't accurate, its valves don't work or leaking. A major valve in the Cairns Dam, which feeds the Shepog, uh, reservoirs is stuck, three quarters closed. So the Shepog reservoirs are basically giving Waterbury all its water. And it's not supposed to be run that way in accordance with the court agreement. They did, they do have the part, it's coming from Germany, they expect to do it in August. You do notice that the river's been really low, a lot lower than it should and, and that's why, there's not a lot of water going over that dam. Um, once the valve gets in, they, they, Waterbury claims they will go back to normal operating procedures. The new guy running the water company, but Robert Lang, Langiers, is very competent. I've talked to him, he knows what he's doing, he's a different brand than the guy before him. I agree with Edwin, we need to watch Waterbury and help Waterbury. I'm not so sure I, I agree that we should be hiring consultants to help Waterbury. And I think the best way to go, and if, if I'm the leader of this thing, the best way I'm gonna go is with political pressure of the state, who should be doing a better job of monitoring Waterbury, it's their job, not ours. I could monitor the contract, I don't need a consultant to tell me whether they're following the contract or not. It's pretty straightforward. And then when you do need consultants, you hire them. And you give them a very specific charge and they give you a cost. Uh, the valve consultant gave us a cost of a hundred eighty-five dollars an hour and that, how many hours you need them? Nobody really knows. Um, not sure why we need a valve and whatever valve meter consultant. Let's call it a water company infrastructure consultant. Um, but he sounds like a very knowledgeable guy. I think I could do a good job of, uh, meeting what Edwin's trying to accomplish. But on the other hand, given everybody, the four groups involved, Roxbury, Washington, Steep Rock and the Roxbury Land Trust, uh, giving them a heads up, not only a heads up, but an expectation of what you're gonna be paying every year, what this might cost and what we're gonna be doing, which right now it's, whatever happens, happens. Um, I know the Roxbury Land Trust has concerns. As the head of this for the Shepog, uh, River Association, I've asked to have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen of Roxbury and the Directors of the Land Trust, not just me, Ann and Barbara, but everybody, and to discuss this and discuss how we wanna move forward. In fact, I, I'm thinking of, uh, inviting Washington and Steep Rock. And Edwin is more than willing to attend and explain where he's coming from, which he could do a much better job than I can. You know, it, it's hard with Edwin 'cause he's donated so much time and his own money. And if it wasn't for him, that river wouldn't be what it is today. I could tell you that. So I'm totally with him on the river. I'm totally with him on, this is an opportunity to get Waterbury in order. Um, on the other hand, going about that, I think it needs more management time, which he probably doesn't have. Um, according to Waterbury, they have the money to upgrade. They're hoping for COVID money to, uh, infrastructure money to change all their lead piping that goes to houses and when they do that, they could change all the meters, so they have an accurate accountability of what, what water's going where, which right now they don't. And as you know, the, the waste estimate is thirty-five percent. Thirty-five percent is a lot of water being wasted through leakage or meters that are operating properly. When most water companies is below ten percent.
Wow. So that's. Are we gonna, so you were gonna try and set up a meeting?
I did, I'm waiting for Ann. I'll have to ping her again and say, Ann, we gotta get this done. Uh, we gotta have a meeting, we gotta commit a certain amount of money going forward. My only problem with it is, is we, we need to budget for this. We can't, oh, here's a four thousand dollar bill and just pay it. We need to budget, it needs to be a line item. And we need to understand what it is, how much, and what we're paying for and all agree to that. And not just have a couple people making these decisions and then sending us the bills.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not gonna work because.
No, and that's why I'm glad he asked.
Know they were coming. We didn't even know they were coming, so.
Glad he asked me to take it over 'cause I know how to manage some, stuff like this, so.
All right, that's great. Thank you for doing that.
No problem.
All right, so let us know when you have something to, uh, a meeting. I'm gonna be around, so.
I will, and I'll let Jim know and.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, so I keep bringing this up, the transfer station and property managers. Um, the last time we talked about it, Russ, you were saying, well, they are haulers, so they need to register and on, and I'm speaking with, um, you know, HRA. Uh, we could do this a lot easier and what we can do is, for example, if someone comes in and is a property manager or we know who's, we can ask who some of the, the people that come in and request the permits, we know that they have property managers. And we can say, how many properties are on your property? Because it's not one permit, it's a permit for every house that's, that is on your property. And what I can do instead i- is order a different, um, permit, like this year it's red and just have it red with an R on it. That's it. Every, every year, the color's gonna change. But we're making up a new sheet and they have to put how many properties they have and it'll be seventy-five dollars for every property moving forward. And if they bring in, and if they bring in stuff that goes into the bulky waste, they have to pay for that also. So, it's a lot easier to do. They will have a permit, but it'll only have an R on it. It's not gonna say Roxbury Transfer Station. But if someone comes in with that and, and we put it on their car, their truck, we know that they work, they're from out of town and they are a property manager. So, would you agree to that? Because I think this is the way to go with it.
I have an easier way.
What?
If you have multiple properties, then get a dumpster. If you have, if, if you.
I know.
Tear your roof off, you don't come with half pickup loads and pay for it 'cause you're filling up our dumpster when everybody in the world gets a dumpster. If you have four properties.
Yeah.
They're dumping, all dumping, you need a dumpster. They're basically, you know.
This is household, this is household.
Okay, you get a household trash dumpster. My neighbor's got a four cubic yard one.
Let me speak to that, Russ, because so happens to be, I am a property manager.
There you go. This is good. That's right.
And I have four, four households.
Right.
And we still get two stickers for the two trucks on the farm to haul any demolition or something, but we also have a six yard dumpster. And all our four households go into the dumpster, gets picked up once a week.
That's the answer, Barbara. What you're proposing is too complicated. And obviously, HRA wants the trash, so they're saying, yeah, why don't you do it? No. Get a dumpster, call Winter Brothers, call Oak Ridge, call all these companies that provide dumpsters. And I'm sure a lot of these people wouldn't really object, it's not that expensive.
It's also, it makes it easier for the property manager. I don't have to leave the property when I do the trash pickup. We go around to each house every Tuesday. It takes, uh, twenty, thirty minutes. It's in the dumpster, they pick it up on Wednesday.
It's actually the way to go with a little transfer station like we have.
So, um.
But it's another police thing because, you know, I do it voluntarily and these other guys aren't gonna be so easy to get along with.
No, not when they can pay seventy-five dollars a household per year. And I mean, I don't know what renting a dumpster costs, but then, and they may say, well, we don't, I don't want.
How much is it? It's a hundred?
It's a hundred and thirty-five dollars a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that.
These are wealthy people we're talking about. We're talking about people with poor households. Not like we're talking about the common middle-class person like me.
No, no, that.
And that's what that transfer station is supposed to be for. It's not supposed to be a, um, somebody who generates that much garbage should do the right thing for the community.
Barbara's got a, a start on it by charging per household for the permit. And if it's a property manager, he pays seventy-five bucks for the number of houses on the property and that we can almost police. Cause you can look on tax records and see, I mean, you can look at my, um, tax records and see how many houses that we have up there.
All right, if you agree with Barbara, I.
I mean, it's a, it's a beginning. We'll get some more money out of the deal, seventy-five dollars per house.
We don't get the money anymore, right, Barbara? Goes to HRA.
No, we get the money for the, the town's permits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and you know, I mean, we could say, this is it, or hire someone, or get a dumpster. Hire somebody to come pick up your trash.
Let's, let's start here and then we can do the others later.
All right, because we do know.
Go ahead and make a motion, Jim.
I'll make a motion to, uh, levy a fee for, uh, multiple houses uh, under one property manager. Um, seventy-five dollars per household that you were responsible, you were in charge, responsible for, in charge of.
I'll second.
He's a hauler, he's becoming a hauler, but he's hauling for those four households. My four households are all owned by the same person.
Right, and that, that's what, that is what they are, that these property managers, they are all owned by the same person.
Correct, yeah.
I'll second that.
It's a start, it's a start.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, COVID nineteen, I, I, you know what, I think this is the last time I'm gonna put that update.
I was gonna say.
We don't need it anymore. Um, our, our senior center's gonna be up and running, they're gonna be offering trips. What they would like to do is, uh, tell those who have not been vaccinated that they cannot go on these bus trips.
Good idea. It's crazy, people are dying.
But anyway, so, um, that, that, that's all I have. We're open, we're running, you know, everybody's here. People are coming in, they're wearing a mask or they say, can I take it off? I've been vaccinated, that's fine. And, um, you know, our, our operations are continuing. Some people got really used to, uh, um, you know, especially with the building department, just sending everything in and they're still doing it. They're not coming in. They're just doing it all by mail and, um, which by the way, we did hire someone to help John. Her name is Pam, she's from Woodbury. Sorry, I, I, I can't, I'm sorry, can't pronounce her name. Get, get, Gangin Back is her last name. She started today. Um, it's gonna work out real well down there. He absolutely needs the help. He has, uh, put in, uh, twice, so far, twice the fees that he has ever put in, in a good year. He's already beat it twice. So, he's got a lot of stuff going on, and she's gonna work out really great. We're very excited to have her. Alright. Uh, Fire Marshal's report, I don't have. I do have the Resident Troopers report. And basically, um, this is what I apologize for not sending it out to you. But, um, they had, uh, 291 calls for service within the town of Roxbury for the month of June. And, um, so it's investigations, motor vehicles, patrol checks, burglar alarm responses, and they assist the ambulance.
What's the majority of it?
Um, I think.
Alarms?
There are, there are quite a number of alarms, but medical assists, there's been on, you know, a number of ambulance calls, um, motor vehicle stops, so they're ticketing, or they're giving out warnings. And, um, there's been a couple investigations. They had five criminal, non-criminal investigations. Six accidents that they had to investigate. 24 written warnings for, uh, motor vehicle offenses and a one infraction. But they also have, um, and there was an evading accident, a burglary and a stolen vehicle, and that's still under investigation. But the Resident Trooper wants to remind residents that the federal government will never accept cash via mail or gift cards as payment, specifically the IRS, all these scam calls that are going on. They have scammed people in this town, and people have paid and met people to give them, uh, gift cards. Um, it's, it's really sad, you know? It's just really sad that this kind of stuff goes on. So my last email blast, I said, they will, the federal government, the IRS, or Eversource, or whatever, is not saying that, will never say, we're, we're gonna arrest you unless you give us $2,000 in gift cards. But it's happening. So really, that's, that's really all about that. Starting tomorrow, we will be on a Code Red for our emergency alert system. We are no longer with Blackboard Connect, which I loved, but it was, the cost was exorbitant. And, um, Code Red is, is excellent, and I've gotta get something out to show that it works. But that's all I have.
Barbara?
Great.
Can I just take a second?
Yeah.
As far as Hurlbut Park usage, do, have we learned any more about the event that's at the end of the month, as far as the size and scope?
Um, is it this, the end of this month? July or August? The farm?
July 29th, isn't it?
Okay. Uh, no, I don't know what the size is. They are gonna have police there. They have one band. They have, um, I guess several food trucks. They were looking to get some vendors. I don't know that they have any. Um, originally, we're gonna ask to sign a petition. They are no longer doing that. And we are not doing that, because we would like our, um, ag science students to participate, which they are.
Okay, alright.
So, uh, expecting maybe 200 people, that's what I've been told.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, so they have, they have done everything we've asked. That's it.
Alright, I gotta go feed the goats. Let's see you all soon.
You make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
See you, Russ. A second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Good night.
May.
You, thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Good night.